Everybody will get an opportunity to speak. We just like to have one person speak at a time. So Wilma can take notes for the record. If you're gonna speak, please stand. State your name and address for the public record. We're gonna continue the hearing that we started in September. A special permit with a site plan approval for Mr. Charles Labby of 24 Lindsay Road. At that particular time, there was a discussion of some wood chips. We made a recommendation to halt the meeting until we could hear from the Conservation Commission regarding the status of the wood chips. I guess I'd ask, hear from the Conserv-- Mr. Sassy? Could you give us an update on the wood chip problem? If there was a problem?
Yeah, my name is Ron Sassy. I'm the chairman of the Hackaway ConCon. And we were told that there was a buffer zone violation. So we, as a commission, three or four of us went over there and checked it out. And we basically determined that the buffer zone was encroached, but not the wetlands, not the resource area. So we told them to cease and desist from dumping wood chips back there. But we gave them to go ahead and kind of pull things out of there and clean it up because it was like branches and stumps. So without impacting the edge of the wood chips, they've cleaned up the area. They have no plans on paving back there. In fact, it would be ludicrous because it's pure wood chips. It's just gonna compose over time and basically hopefully solidify itself without going into the wetlands.
So to the Conservation Commission is satisfied that this thing is cleared up?
Right, I visited the site and it looks better. In fact, they've made improvements. They pulled out a couple of old car clerks, a couple of Chevys, and an old truck. So they've actually, you know, bettered the property as far as the wetlands are concerned.
Okay. Mr. Labby, do you have anything else you want to add to what you're doing?
No, thank you for going up there. Yeah, the stuff that was, that's kind of inside of that sign, I'm gonna get rid of it before snow flies, that's not gonna be an issue. I'm gonna lay up here a little bit and send it up so it doesn't look like a storm. But again, before snow flies, that stuff will be out of there.
In terms of, from the last meeting to this meeting, you talked about selling cars, selling accessories. Has any of that information that you presented at the last meeting changed in regards to your sales position out there?
No, no, so.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any comments for, against? Mr. Lyman?
Yeah, I guess I have one question. July 26th, we don't know. Now, I got to know where the wood chips are. And I can be able to park cars or campers or boats or anything back there. Is that correct?
I would--
The fence, the fence was the barrier. He says you weren't going on me on that fence, right?
Well, where the wood chips are, there was an area of probably 40 feet, 50 feet, which was, and I think Rod could probably attest to that, that was basically a contigoration of the field. And the last meeting, I think, when the gentleman brought up afterwards cars that were gonna be torn apart, I would leave them there, I would push them by the fence or whatever.
This is a pretty good area of virgin ground here. Paul Labby, 56 Grace Street. There's a pretty good area of virgin ground here. We redid the chips and put them on a virgin ground in the garage set. So there is quite an area there.
As far as where the chips are? No, absolutely not.
What does that mean, Paul? There is an area, there is an area available to work on--
Well, he can put them behind that fence. If he takes a camper car, then he can put it behind that fence.
So that it's not a, not visible from the street and not an eyesore?
Right, right. Not to put, you know, a junkyard back there, but to get parts there if he needed them.
My second question would be, how many cars can you actually keep on this property? I've always got 13 parking spots. He's probably gonna have a couple of cars on display. What, how many cars can you go beyond that?
That's up to the selectmen.
They can have up to, what, seven? Seven for sale?
It's up to the selectmen, give them a license.
And we can make that part of our conditions.
We can put a limit.
I'm not sure whether it addresses that in the bylaw in the zoning.
I thought we discussed that it was, the max was seven for sale.
Seven a year?
Yeah, that's correct, seven at one time.
4.9, Bob.
4.9? Do I have a 4.9? I must have something.
That's what's in the notes.
Huh, there isn't. This is 4.4. I think, in the table of use, I think, addresses that. Oh yeah, 4.9 of the table of use, so it's section three, subsection 4.9. A display of vehicles in the front yard limited to seven vehicles. All other display vehicles must set back at least 35 feet from the front boundary line. Garage service and repair base must be located on the side or rear of the building. They are currently on the side of the building now. I've never heard that word. What does that mean? Disassembly?
No, it's lining up.
Oh, queuing of vehicles on the site must be accompanied, accommodated in the side or rear yards of buildings. Never heard that word. So I guess to answer your question, Mr. Lyman, this says seven vehicles in the front yard. That's his, that he's limited to that display. Everything else must be 35 feet back from the boundary. I don't know what, and I was gonna ask the question, what's your intent? What would you like? Or how do you see this beyond the seven vehicles? What's parked on the, in the yard, not in the front for display?
I don't think it's ever gonna encroach that. It may have, you know, two or three vehicles in for registered vehicles and for repair.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Or one that came from the auction that needs to be shined up a little bit.
Right.
Or a couple.
It would encroach seven. And again, if I had a couple of cars, registered cars, and for repair, that's, you know, what the 13 spots are for. I don't ever see any of that.
Paul, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I went by and looked at the site since our last meeting. And in one of the drawings that you provided last time, it was an aerial photograph that showed parking spots? There were parking spots on the side of the property adjacent to--
No, in the last, that was just an illustration for your, just a model here.
Okay.
That, the original, the site plan that was approved, there's only parking on that one side of the 13.
On the east side of the property?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
And it appears as if, I mean, there's virtually no sort of separation, if you will, between your property and the neighbor's property. And there's some tall, like, pine trees there. So there's really no screening whatsoever between the two properties. I mean, I know that pine trees have branches up above, but down at the lower sort of eyesight level, there's really no screening between the two. Have you, are you planning to put any shrubbery or screening in there with, to complement or in conjunction with expanding the operation to sell more vehicles?
Again, I haven't really thought about that. I know it came up a year ago. And there was some discussion about putting a berm in, but that basically fell by the wayside.
I think last, we talked about it last time, but I'm not sure where it ended up. I think Mr. Lyman didn't care for that to--
I was against any trees being planted there because, you know, they're probably not gonna get anything anyways.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I recall it, that Mr. Labby had proposed it, but Mr. Lyman said, "I don't care to have them there." So--
I'd rather leave it open as long as he's gonna do what he says he's gonna do. And I got one more question from Mr. Labby. Do you plan to ever park boats in there for winter storage or campers in there for winter storage?
That's totally--
My friends are family.
That's totally the man.
Okay.
Are you talking about inside the building?
Yeah, just talking inside the building.
Well, I think what happens inside the building--
Well, I would love in the field.
In the yard.
In the yard.
In the yard, yeah.
Well, again, I, what's your intent? I mean, it could happen or it could not happen. We could, we could limit that as well, you see. We have--
My intent is not to have a field for campers, no.
What about three or four?
My intent is not to have campers in the field at this point. You know, I would have to prefer, what are the bylaws?
What's the history? I mean, has there been campers out there and boats in the past?
Well, before Jimmy kept his camper there, my neighbor kept his camper there. I mean, it was only two and they were on the south side of the building. But there again, my biggest fear is that this place is gonna turn into a junkyard. And that's, that's my worry, that's my concern.
Well, you know--
You know, it doesn't help the property there, that's for sure.
I think we, last time, when he was here for motor vehicle repair and service, the bylaw limits, storage limited to five hulks. And I would say hulks are cars that are--
Not running.
Being cannibalized for parts or, you know, we're gonna fix up when we get a chance kind of thing. And that's, those are the cars we talked about, or I assume that would be behind the fence. So that they're not, you know, the hood's open and it's all--
I understand that part, but I'm concerned about boats or campers being stored in addition to that.
Okay, well, anyway, the junkyard thing is addressed. And I don't have the other special permit in front of me, but I know we addressed that to five hulks last year when Mr. Labby was here. So, I mean, that still carries forward. And the zoning limits it as well. So even if we didn't say it, it's in the zoning. I mean, we'll discuss boats and campers, but if he owns a camper, you ought to be able to park it on his property, whether it's for the winter or for the weekend.
One camper, but is it gonna be friends, family? Where are you gonna have those?
Well, that's, that's what I think we need to discuss and maybe limit that to protect your property. And that's why we would do it. The same way with the, I mean, the bylaw addresses the seven vehicles in the front yard. He just said there may be a few, and we can establish a number on that, in the middle yard, so to speak, that are either customers' cars being worked on, they're registered, they got tags on them, or vehicles that he has bought and is prepping, because you have to do something to them to get them ready to sell. So I think we need to do a limit on that, again, because of the neighborhood. It's in a residential neighborhood. So we'll discuss that as well. You're not, it's not falling on deaf ears, is what I'm saying.
Just to be clear, is there any intent to repair boats? Recreational vehicles? I.e. campers? Or, how about farm equipment?
My own lawnmowers, yeah.
Okay, your lawnmower. I'm talking about lawnmower, tractors, hay machine, a cultivator, potato harvester? I don't know, I'm trying--
I grew up in Hampton, another property.
Okay. I just want to make the record clear so that everybody's on the same page as far as--
I think I've done everything I said I was gonna do two years ago. And if anybody has a problem, they all know where the town laws. So, and I know that they have no problem finding that. So why would I go, yes, I'm not saying anything?
Yeah, the, any conditions we've put on there are enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer. So if there's, if you go out some morning and there's 10 campers out there and there was only supposed to be two, then you file a complaint down here and the zoning enforcement officer follows up on it. So it's, it's all gonna be enforceable. It's, it'll be in the record, as well as your comments are in the record.
Do we have any other comments, questions from?
I just have one other. We talked a little bit about signage in the last meeting and what you were planning on for signage. Do we need to sort of nail that down in terms of what the extent that that can be in terms of lighting and--
That was spelled out, I thought it was--
Some just casual conversation about that, lights and stuff like that. And you said you weren't gonna, you weren't planning on doing that, but do we need to actually have something stated in--
Oh, we should, yeah.
About signage?
The only signage I would probably put is a, kind of like on the corner of whatever the, I would buy bylaws or whatever you say. I have a billboard, obviously, you know, like two and a half, like four, or, you know, that type of, you know, painted--
A freestanding painted sign. You have a sign now on the building, I think, right? Isn't there something on the--
There's just a little shingle hanging.
Yeah, right.
But that's, I mean, you see, what I'm talking about with signage is very discreet, very limited taste. And there's gonna be no lighting. We already, we kind of went over that, you know. I plan to put some Christmas lights on the fence, I hope that's not offensive.
Outline the old truck.
There's somebody who might be--
You mean, just during the holiday season, though?
Absolutely.
Halloween is coming up, too, you know. Whatever. Yeah, the bylaw limits signs to two signs for the property. One freestanding sign and one attached to the building. And there's, there's limits on the dimensions of the sign, especially the one attached to the building. And the height and area of the freestanding signs. And then the lighting, it says signs may be lighted, but no sign will be of the traveling, animated, or flashing type signs. The Las Vegas kind of stuff, you know. So that, the bylaw limits it, but we can also restate it in here as well, in our conditions.
Yeah, I would probably put a sign to the right of the door, the entryway. And then have a small sign out, oh, there's an oak tree, probably, that, you know, you know, not on the road, away from the road.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, I'm gonna--
I make a--
Motion.
That we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those, oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. That is, just to explain, the comment from, it was, now we discuss it amongst ourselves and we'll vote on it, just so you know what's going on now.
So we have to come up with a number of, well, I know that the Board of Selectmen, I guess, can limit the number of vehicles for sale.
Yeah, that, he has to go through them for a license as well. So if they don't like the number seven and only want four, they can, they can limit it in the license, so. I guess we need to say number of vehicles on display, what is this called, in the front yard?
4.9.
Yeah. I'll get that.
Oh, here it is, right here. Table of use. Retail and service use is 4.9, but it's section 4.9.
Yeah. I guess we, for the, one of the conditions, we just restate the notes in the bylaw, which is, "Display of vehicles in the front yard shall be limited to seven vehicles."
Just put down the number and the number of vehicles.
Yeah, then all other, I'm waiting for Wilma to catch up. Okay, then I would say number two, all other display, well, wait a minute.
Vehicles and signage, that's what you're saying?
No, all other vehicles.
See, it doesn't, it doesn't say, it really, now I'm rereading this. It doesn't, it says, "Display of vehicles in the front yard limited to seven. All other display vehicles."
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to get away from, the display and limit it to the, limit the number of vehicles that are there for repairs or--
And/or sale.
Yeah, or getting prepped for sale, or pending sale, or something like that. I guess we can say all other vehicles must be set back at least 35 feet from the front boundary line and be limited to, what do we want to say there, five? You could have a couple of customers, a couple that he's working on, and one that's got the sole sign on it, I guess.
Well, that would get him close to the 13 parking spots that he has.
Yeah.
So that's more than 35 feet deep from the road.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It must be 150 feet back there.
And then number three, we can limit, restate 4.20, that the, in the notes, that the storage, how are we gonna say this? Storage is limited to five hulks. And those vehicles shall be stored-- What is that, east of the fence? Is it east? Yeah, kind of, yeah. East of, east of the fence, or in the, in the--
Behind the fence.
Behind the back fence, I guess. On the east side of the rear fence.
Actually, it would be the north side of the fence.
Is it?
Yeah.
I guess it kind of faces northeast. And then signs.
Accords with 5.9.
Yeah, with section 5.9 of the zoning bylaws. And then boats and motor homes, how do we want to limit that?
Well, he said he wasn't gonna repair any.
No, but, of storage, I guess, storage or--
Storage, I think it was discussed. But you might have the vehicle in there to repair an engine or something.
That's true, yeah.
I mean, in other words, I think the question was, they didn't want storage, right? Vehicles.
Well, the ones that's limited, so you say there's one or two there, that's--
How about two?
You have a dozen or eight, then--
Limit that to two.
Okay, storage of RVs, which kind of covers motorhomes as well as trailers, and boats shall be limited to two--
No more than two.
No more, no more than two of each.
Yeah, so we could have two boats, two campers?
No more than four. Sports vehicles.
And of course, whatever happens inside the building happens, you know, I mean, you could put, you could fill it up with boats, as long as they're not out in the yard. Because it's, it's in the building. What's happening in the building is, is not jurisdiction or zoning necessarily, what you're storing in there. That's my concern. Anybody else have anything else?
No, so we got seven for sale? Seven cars for sale? No. Five for repair?
Yeah. Five hulks in the, behind the fence.
And the hulks will be behind the fence.
Pardon me?
The hulks are gonna be behind the fence.
Yeah, that's, that's in the conditions. And then the signs is the fourth condition. And the fifth condition would be the storage of the RVs and boats.
Anything else we need?
No, this is special permit with site plan review.
Yep.
I don't have my site plan. I was looking at my briefcase, I must have taken it out. Anybody else have anything? I'll make a motion.
I don't think so.
Read it off, hold a second.
I, I would make a motion that the special permit be granted, subject to the five conditions that we stated. Motion for you. You're second?
I'll second, yeah.
We have to--
I think they understand it.
Yeah, we should, we should go through the--
You should spell it out.
--requirements findings. Oh, the site plan review, yeah, we gotta, we'll do that as a separate vote, I think.
Okay. Site plan review.
Now, we have the special permit before us. Say again?
I don't think we--
We haven't voted.
We haven't voted yet, so--
We got it moved and seconded.
We got to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the special permit is granted. I would make a motion that we approve the site plan. I don't have it in front of me. Okay, I knew Paul would have it. I'd make a motion, we approve the site plan as submitted. Yeah, that was the other, that was last--
That's the last one, yeah.
That was two years ago. Okay, I've made a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. And the site plan is approved. There's a 20-day appeal period from the date it's filed with the town clerk. It usually takes a couple, three days to file it there. And the town clerk will give you a certificate of no appeal on the 21st day, if in fact no one has appealed it. Thank you. Right on time.
How's your knee coming?
Yep.
Oh, I gotta watch this.
Put a ball joint in it, take one, take one out of one of those Chevys out in the back. It is a ball joint though, but it's not like that.
Probably the next time you have to come, it'll be, we'll be ADA compliant here, so you'll have an easier time getting up.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do we have to sign another site plan?
Yeah, we got to sign another site plan, I don't have mine, I don't know what the, I don't know what I did with it. Maybe I gave it back, too.
Well, that's...
No, no, that's, that's all, that's all, that's history. Oh, okay, so that's, well, we'll just restamp it and re-sign it with a new date.
As long as we're not signing this next one, because this is the one that shows the lots, parcels up.
So do you have enough copies of that to sign, Willma?
Well, we can make copies of it, too.
Yeah, we can. You want me to go down and get them?
Just run up toward the copy machine. I don't know, what time's our next...
Well, it's eight o'clock, and lot is one's at eight.
We can just do it after, I guess.
Yeah. Want me to read the notice?
Yeah, I can read the notice. Town of Hatfield Planning Board, request for site plan review, notice of meeting. A meeting will be held Hat, by the Hatfield Planning Board Memorial Town Hall, fifty-nine Main Street, Hatfield, Mass. on October second, twenty thirteen, at eight P M., on an application filed by Southland Log Homes LLC, property owned by Richard F. Thayer, for the premises at West Street, Hatfield, Mass. Assessors map two-one-one, Lot eight, currently zoned business, for the purpose of building a log home sales model, to exhibit the features of a log home to potential customers, in accordance with section three point oh, Use Regulations, subsection four point one eight, set forth by the zoning bylaws. Complete applications available for inspection during regular business hours, the office of the town clerk, fifty-nine Main Street, Hatfield, Mass. Mr. Thayer, if you could please step forward and present to the board what you'd like to do.
Well, these gentlemen here, gentlemen is local representative for Southland Homes, and these are the, it's the same version of that, just smaller.
Yep.
And what they'd like to do is put a model home there. The area that they are going to use is west, and I was originally going to use.
It's a small footprint, actually, it was there.
West parking, they're farther away from the bank. They're still going to use both entrances and exits.
Now, we're going to use one entrance.
You're going to use one?
Yeah, I think they got down to where they said we just going to use one, is that because I'm wrong, Lee?
Well, this shows two.
Don't direct to each other, you know.
This shows two, and the two exist. Are you not going to use two entrances?
I believe that's, that's possible, for safety, I don't know what it was, but they...
Okay. Which one are you not going to use?
We're going to probably use this one out here.
Okay, close the southern one.
Just to the parking lot, that's really what you need. Then you got to get a lawnmower. Or a billy goat.
Right next door to us.
I know, tell me about it.
On the same side.
Is there going to be lighting, area lighting, in the parking area?
Generally speaking, there'll be three or four parking lot lights.
Okay. Because you are, you are going to be open.
Yeah, in the winter.
Of course, when the winter, it's dark at four-thirty, even if you're only there till five o'clock, you...
What, what do you anticipate the hours of operation?
We're usually going to be there from nine in the morning until six at night, on Saturdays we close at four o'clock, we're closed on Saturdays at this time.
So basically, everybody'd be out of there at six?
Everybody out at six.
Yeah. If you haven't sold it by then, you're not going to sell it.
The ones that we can keep there that long.
How many, how many employees do you anticipate?
The max it would get would be about thirty. If the economy really came back, right now, there'd be one, there could be a receptionist, and there could be another salesperson, so three would be.
Depends on the business.
So you, so you may use up as, as many as three of the parking spots?
Well, one of those people is Gil, who's the regional manager, he's not always there, so we could use as many as three, but often, it would be one or two.
Okay.
He doesn't need all those.
Yeah, we probably would get maybe one or two, three, three customers a day. On the weekend, maybe we'll have, I don't know, four or four, you know, on the weekend.
Yeah.
It's not like over...
No, you're not going to have, it's not a Walmart, or...
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a destination place where people are going to stop there.
Do you ever have events around, like, you know, like a real big open house, where you actually have, you know, balloons and a vendor, you know, that kind of thing? I mean, do you ever try and attract people that way, or...
We have had events on weekends, on Saturday, for example, we don't generally do balloons or vendors or any kind of atmosphere there, but we'll invite people to an open house.
Maybe some barbecue or something like that, you know.
So it could be that, there could be times when you might, I mean, not that I'm suggesting more parking, but you may have, you may have issues with that at some point.
Well, seems to me, there's enough hard area of overflow. I'm sure the folks working here could park down here.
Right.
Nose to nose, and then any overflow from an open house, would, there's, there's...
Unless you have a pig roast there and catch a couple of the pigs in the back.
My neighbor might not like me, dude.
He won't like you, anyway. What about a sign?
We technically, correct me if I'm wrong...
Go ahead.
Put it right here, on the front deck area, right, Lee?
Yeah.
But what do you think?
I mean, the first thing we would do is comply with any sign requirements, whatever they are, they're different in different areas, and whatever they are here, we would comply with. What we would want people to be able to see is, is from the interstate, but...
Yeah.
So your sign would be on this side of the building?
Forty yard, where the hell is that? Yeah, back, it's right there.
Yeah, language regarding lights, lit signs to the interstate, or no...
Well, it's still, it still would come under the sign bylaw.
Yeah.
You know, no matter which way it faces, it's the bio, the section...
So it'd be the same kind of lighting, no Vegas-style lighting, you were talking about?
No, we don't do flash.
How do you, I know this doesn't have to do with the building, but like, what's the marketing, I don't want to know your trade secrets, but your marketing strategy, how do you get people to come in, or is it like word of mouth, you sending out flyers, or...
Basically, a lot of the locals' word of mouth. We do also advertise on the website, on our internet, and those customers will call in to our center, and we'll invite them to the model.
Set up an appointment.
Set up an appointment, and that's how we generate the one to two, or maybe on the weekend, three or four customers that we get.
Good. They usually find us.
In their, in their log home magazine, or something like that, or, I've glanced at that, and there's about a million of them in there.
Unfortunately, a lot of those people are not in business that's in there now.
All right.
Oh, we don't have any neighbors here.
Well, no, not really, I think though, it's, it's important...
You're happy, okay?
I mean, we can't condition it, but I think it's important that the lights, the area lighting...
Don't block the...
Yeah, be shining down and not, not horizontal.
The highway will tell you anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Most...
But they do, once we have shine directly.
Yeah, most area lighting nowadays, it takes that into account, because...
Glares and...
Yeah, light pollution.
Lighting, yeah.
I mean...
It's like the sun getting, yeah.
Yes.
People don't want it to go beyond the property line, or beyond the area that they're trying to light, first of all, it's a waste of energy, and secondly, it could be a nuisance and cause glare on the highway, so...
That's a bad area out there, because we shut off a light, and they said they used that for a nightlight. So they put it back in again.
From a traffic standpoint, on this stretch of West Street and five and ten, this is a lower impact than the restaurant would have been in terms of, you know, coming and going.
Sure, yeah, a lot lower, I would think. And they're not going to be, you know, they'll be closed at six, probably by five o'clock, unless somebody's got an appointment there at five o'clock or something, you're not going to have somebody go look at a, look at a log home at five o'clock or five-thirty, whereas a restaurant, you're going to have people that want to go out to dinner, and if that was, I don't know if that was going to be the hours for the restaurant or not, but people, more traffic than going in and out, that sort of stuff, plus the people that are traveling to go home anyway. I don't know, anything else we need to...
I have anything else.
Everybody else is happy. Make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we change the use regulation.
We're going to, we're approving a new site plan, I think is what...
Site plan?
Yeah, we're approving the site plan under...
So we got to approve the site plan? I make a motion that we approve the site plan as presented in Exhibit A, or whatever it is.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got to stamp it and sign it, and...
Give it back to you.
Start digging tomorrow.
I'll be down here tomorrow, pick it up.
Are you serious, you want him here tomorrow? Because he will be here tomorrow.
You're not anxious right now, are you?
We have a twenty day appeal period.
No, there's no appeal period on this, because it's site plan review.
That's all.
It's just an administrative process, so, no, there's no appeal periods, that's why I said you can start digging tomorrow. Yeah, we'll sign it tonight, we'll stamp it and sign it tonight, and he doesn't know, he doesn't owe us any money, does he? No, no. We, we signed your, Richie, we signed this approval not required for the lot years ago, and, and you're still owning the li, the land, you're not transferring the land.
The land, they're buying.
Oh, they are, okay. No, we, we sign, we don't need to sign any plans, that was signed a long time ago, the lot is not changing, so, so therefore...
Not configuration, it's just changing hands.
Yeah, okay.
And use.
And use, yeah, but from here on, it's going to be...
Less than...
They're taking it over.
Good deal. Okay.
So be ready tomorrow?
Yeah, be ready tomorrow.
Okay. You want to stop by?
Yes, ma'am, I'll take you.
Thank you, welcome to Hatfield.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, good luck to you.
Be eleven o'clock, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Always, always selling, huh? Always selling.
Thank you.
That's a big catalog.
Well, I don't know, who wants them, I don't need one.
You don't need a log home today?
I, I put the money in my own house.
Be cool. I'll take a look at it. Mr. Bocesski.
Joe Bocesski, forty-five Main Street, Hatfield.
Where is that?
Where's what?
Forty-five.
Hatfield, Hatfield.
Yeah, where's Hatfield?
Right on the street, I'm off of Main Street.
Yeah, I know where you are.
Now, I was here, beginning of summer, yeah, concerning...
Oh, man, April.
April, I have a noise complaint, concerning, my neighbor's rooster. I was just wondering how the bylaw is coming, because come to find out, the town does not have a bylaw against noise or nuisance. This, we can't control this, no, no possible way. This thing goes from five-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty, eight-thirty at night, seven days a week. We can hear it in the house, with the windows closed, I can't enjoy my porch, we're out at the pool, no matter where you're going here, I tell you here is too, it's, it's getting to be too much. I don't care about, the farming regulations cover this, this is a residential area, and there should not be any roosters that close to any house. It's only about three hundred, two hundred and fifty feet away from us. I brought the recording last time, you heard how annoying it is, and, and just upsetting, you know, it's getting to a point where it's bothering us so much that, you know, we don't know what to do. I approached the neighbors three times, without any results, and all he told me is not your difficulty. Well, it's not my difficulty. It's too bad that, you know, he wouldn't somehow just, you know, take us into account. My wife and I, we just can't take it no further.
Sounds like the rooster needs a hand, so you have any hands in there?
Yes, he's got hands, but this rooster is ghosting.
He's just running them up, that's all.
But something's got to be done, and I just wonder if this bylaw's going to be in the town or in the next meeting, next town meeting. It's, it's, it's got to be, because can't wait another year.
I would say yes, we have, have it started working, we have a draft of a noise bylaw regarding farm animals, to include roosters, birds, chickens...
Chickens don't make any noise.
Some other types of farm animals.
Yeah, there's probably put nuisance in there, too, in the bylaw, because, you know, I mean, there's always, I know there's always ways of getting around what's written, you know, if, if it's going to go into the grandfather thing, you know, we had a rooster before the bylaw, you know, what happened is that? Nothing?
No, they just have to, put them where it's dark, and he won't do anything.
What's that?
You have to put them where it's dark, he only crows when the sun comes up.
That would be a hearing.
Yeah, okay, yeah, this is the procedure for this forty-eight.
No, I know, I raised him. Till I smartened up, and I just shut the, the street light on in the front.
Does he have to write a letter to the Board of Selectment?
In May of, or April of two, twenty twelve.
Has Joe got a, Joe, do you have anything you want to submit to us, the review?
Well...
Ordinance?
Just following up on, you know, what the board told, told me that they were going to write a bylaw, and I just want to make sure that it's going to go through. I'd like nuisance added into that bylaw, because just noise sometimes doesn't cover everything.
Well, I think noise, whether it's vehicular traffic, or airplanes, or motorcycles, whatever, I think they, there, there are decibel standards, you know, that's something you can test, I mean, what, what may be a nuisance to you may sound like good music to me, you see, you know, rock and roll, you may not like, and I, and I love it, you know, so, it's not a nuisance to me, but to you, it is, so I think you, you have to have something that's measurable, and then a definition of what is a nuisance would be above a certain level of noise, that's the only way you can define it.
Well, they can come and test it.
Well, yeah, but, but I mean, the bylaw has to say that, it can't just say a nuisance, because again, what's music to my ears is a nuisance to your ears.
Let me, let me put it this way.
And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to discount it or anything.
Let me put it this way, somebody can have an American dog, okay, and they can walk right over their house and do something about it, okay? What's the difference between this? A dog you can control, you can take it inside, you can, you can quiet it, but what can you do with a rooster?
That's why I thought maybe, that's why I thought maybe you... That's why I thought maybe, that's why I thought maybe he needed a hand, that's why he was.
Yeah.
Crawling, crawling for a hand.
There's plenty of hands here, but, you know, it's, it's very annoying and uncomfortable.
Isn't the owner annoyed? I mean, I would think he would get sick of hearing it all the time, too. I think we have to look at that barking dog law, how that's established as a, as a.
I don't, I don't know if it, that the town bylaws doesn't, it says, I think it does address barking dogs.
This is worse than the bylaw.
But it doesn't, it doesn't talk about decibel levels. If I'm having a party at my house, it doesn't talk about decibel levels, it just says I'm causing a nuisance. But I, I do feel that the citizens of Hatfield should have, should be entitled to some peace and quiet and I don't, and I understand, you know, you hear a lot about that this is a farming community. Well, if somebody's, if, if somebody's running their tractor until 10 o'clock at night next to your, or has a, has, is picking up all their vegetables every single night with a tractor trailer truck at unreasonable hours, that's, I don't think that's right, I think they should, should have a limit on that.
Those are supposed to be 365 days a year.
Yeah, we understand.
Tractors, they're going to be there, they're going to be gone.
It was a very, a very. That's about the dogs licensing, I think there's one section in there about the, didn't say very much.
And I'm sure they don't take the decibels of the dog barking when they go, when somebody complains and they go do something about it. I'm sure they don't go to the meter and see, well, how loud is the dog barking? Oh, we can't do it because it's not loud enough. It doesn't, it doesn't fly with me.
What the heck is the damn thing about the noise? Let me ask you a question, I know we asked, I think we asked last time, have, has the, have you contacted the chief of police or the board of health?
I talked to, I talked to Tom Holsley and he can't advise or whatever.
Get a, an ordinance.
It was, there was a very small thing because it talked about.
Okay, here's biting, barking, howling or any other manner. Dog, no person shall allow a dog of which he is the owner or keeper, section, subsection II, by biting, barking, howling, or in any other manner to disturb the peace or quiet of any neighborhood or endanger the safety of any person.
Actually, a fine is issued. Definitely. Same thing.
I don't know why that couldn't be expanded on to, say, animal.
You know, I told.
What if you have a parakeet or a parrot that's a, you know, unannoying, the same kind of thing, but I thought there was.
There was a section here on livestock.
Well, it was talking about annoying conduct.
I just want to give you an example, I did give an article about Hadley had the same problem with a neighbor. They went right over there, they did something about it and they were going to find the person who stated get rid of the rooster a certain amount of time.
Hadley may have a bylaw.
They do have a bylaw.
Get a copy of their bylaw and bring it to us.
I have a copy.
You do have a copy? Okay.
Get a bylaw similar to Hadley's and have some teeth in it.
Well, I'll just give you an example of what I would like for our group to discuss, our committee to discuss, it's, it's, I can make you a copy. Talks about radio, phonograph, musical instruments, televisions, tape recorders, electronic sound producing devices, shouting or whistling, yelling, shouting, hooting, whistling between certain hours, animal noises, the keeping of any animals, dogs, cats, cows, horses, mules, donkeys, birds slash fowls, quotes, or I mean in parentheses, chickens or roosters, which by causing frequent or non-continued noise shall disturb the reasonable comfort or repose of any purpose, or repose of any person, excuse me, devices to attract attention like drums, musical instruments, creating noise. Exemptions are, we talk about emergency vehicles, highway, utility, construction, public address. And then there's, there would be a violation of penalties and enforcement section and should be enforced by the Hatfield Police Department or any person agreed by the imposition of a fine.
Now, this is a new bylaw?
This, this would be a unlawful noise prohibited, yes.
This is Hadley's bylaw?
Basically.
Okay.
I changed a few things, but this is what they have, including, including, they have a $300 fine. I don't know if we want to have a $300 fine or not, but.
No, it's, it's, the fine, the fine is in a period.
Right. No, I just, I just, I just believe that, I, I, I believe, this is my opinion, that somebody should not have to listen to that kind of noise on a continuous basis, seven days a week.
Inside the house with the windows closed.
Right.
No matter what part of the house I'm in, any bedroom, living room, dining room, kitchen, it's annoying. With the windows closed, so you can imagine how loud that thing is.
You mentioned that you live, that you described this as a residential area, do any of the other, do any of the other neighbors have a similar?
Board of selectmen might be able to adopt that. It's not zoning, it shouldn't come under zoning.
Response and concern about the rooster. If it's a residential area, then you're presumably not the only neighbor to this.
Under the nuisance.
Well, I'm the one, the, the rooster is directly behind their house, their, our house, the porch is right there. The other neighbors, they probably don't hear this loud, but they hear. I don't think it's annoying to them because I'm right there, 350, 350, 350 feet away and believe me, it's loud. I haven't talked to any other neighbors, I'm not concerned with any other neighbors. I'm concerned with our peace and quiet right now. I pay taxes like everybody else, I should be according to my peace and quiet and my neighbors.
I'm just, I was just asking if any of the other neighbors.
So I don't know. I'm just, I'm just adopting.
So I don't know if she hears or not.
We'll talk to them tomorrow if you like.
Yeah.
What is, what it can take, what it takes to put the decision in here. Somewhere, the town attorney may have to review it and they'll determine where it's going to go.
Joe, you're not outside in a back porch, but you know, so you're inside the house, it's, it's a lot different.
Joe.
Yep.
What I'm, what I'm going to do, this should go in the town bylaws, not in the zoning, because the bylaws have a section called. General police regulations.
That was my intention, the first time I.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how this gets changed. It's a selectman can just adopt something in here or if it has to go to town meeting. Tomorrow I will talk with Paul Boudreau, who is the administrative assistant for the town. And I will submit this to him and, and, and get a determination on how this can be changed to include this bylaw that has to do with noise in general, whether it's chickens, chickens or, or, or a radio. And then again, it.
Long range of things.
Right, so that, that would, that would help not only you, but it would help somebody on the other side of town that has neighbors that, with loud parties and that sort of thing. I will check on this tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
And, and maybe it can get done in the next few months, maybe it's got to go to town meeting, I don't know how, how to change the town bylaws.
I'll be back in a second.
Okay.
And I, we all know this now, I have another issue. What can be done with Skarsinski's house on King Street? Oh, that, that's terrible, that, that shouldn't be allowed in this town. I'm sure there's some type of bylaw against maintaining property or something.
Unless it's, unless it's a safety issue, no. If it's.
Taxes aren't paid and things like that.
I thought they sold.
I don't know, just because they don't, you know, I know, I know what it is, the shrubs are overgrown, the lawn's not mowed. But that's, there's nothing we can do about that, yeah, it's an eyesore. If it were a safety issue, then, then it could, the property can be secured so that it's not an attractive nuisance or something like that. If, if the doors were wide open and kids were going in there and people going in and raising heck and all that, yeah, that can be dealt with, but you can't make people mow their lawn or trim their shrubs.
Or cut the trees down going up the house.
Or cut them down, so, really nothing. And I don't know if it's in limbo because of estates or what, what the deal is, why, why they're letting it go like that, because it's only, the house is just deteriorating. But that's.
Houses will be much, work much harder.
That's right, that's right, but there's nothing we can do about it unless it becomes a safety issue or a public nuisance, you know, when that, the roof is blown off every time it, the wind blows or something like that. But I'll see what I can get done about this tomorrow.
Okay, so when can I come back and check on that?
Well, we meet again in another month.
Well, but it would seem like it would probably be valuable for him to check with the town administrator.
Well, yeah.
Why don't you, why don't you talk?
If we have to run it, we'd run it in February or January hearing. And if somebody else is going to do it, maybe they can do it quicker.
Give me your number, Joe, and I'll have, I'll have somebody call you.
Yeah, it's 247-5444.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to be on top of it.
I understand, yeah.
Can you hold this on? It's all considered.
Okay, I'll see what I can get done tomorrow and then I'll call you or Paul Boudreau from the administrative assistant will call you and let you know what the next step is and what the procedure is going to be and how soon that can happen.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Not that I didn't make an effort with him.
I understand.
I gave, I gave a letter, you know, of all the conversations we had and it's too bad, but that's what I stand up.
I think we did it taken care of.
I appreciate that.
PDQ.
Have a good day.
Okay, you too, Joe.
Take care.
Take care, thank you for coming in.
I need to steal that back from you, Bob, just so I can copy my file.
What's that, this, this bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll pick it up tomorrow. I'll come by first thing, I'll go for coffee and then I'll come over here.
Just quickly, we got a letter or we got a, we got a handwritten notice from Ursula Donaldson regarding, would you please tell me the procedure to follow, the correct steps to go before the town for zone change to light industrial for my house? What's the timeframe? Do I have, do I have to have an attorney?
Her attorney was here last time.
I know.
And asked us those questions.
Actually, that was the attorney of her sister.
Oh.
And she really doesn't want to have an attorney or she doesn't need one.
Doesn't need one.
She doesn't need one, so Wilma dug out the chapter 48, section 5 adaption, change of zoning ordinance or bylaw procedure, so she would have to write a letter to the board of selectmen stating, I want to change the zoning from residential to light industrial.
No, the other way around, I thought. Oh, no, that's right, yeah, because she wants to offer it for.
She wants the whole piece as one.
What the front part is residential and the back part is.
That's right, I remember that now.
Light industrial.
The problem is if she does it too soon.
Well, yeah.
Then the clock. Have a special town meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's too soon before annual town meeting.
She would have to do it, well, we have to have, well, the public hearing, let's see, board of submit, board of selectmen, go to the planning board within 14 days.
It'd happen in January, probably, February.
Public hearing has to be within 65 days after submit all publication.
Yeah, January and February. We don't have town meeting till April.
Around the first of the year.
Would you like me to just drop her a letter?
Yeah, if you could just draw up a letter and, and.
I'll slip it in front of the board.
You could, you could even send her a copy of that in, as an enclosure and say, these are the, you know, these are the steps that you have to do. Anything else we need to tell her? I don't, I don't, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Did anyone have a chance to look at the minutes of last month's meeting?
Yeah, I wrote them all today.
We have to.
I moved that we accept them as printed.
Any discussion?
Second, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What is that, 12 pages of minutes?
Yeah, it was a long meeting.
We had two big meetings and one was continued. So I don't know if you need a sign, here's a, I signed a copy, Wilma, for you. You're going to send a letter to Ursula. We have to sign a site plan.
Yeah.
Two site plans for Mr. Bowles.
And we got enough.
And here they are, at least the pages, two plans here, open to that page. We signed all the others, but Lydia wants these because she wrote lots one and two on the front of them.
Is this going to be edited or all?
Yeah, we're all done.
Yeah.